President Joe Biden declared that the United States would use its military to protect Taiwan. And the White House clarified by stating, this is fine.
Monkeypox is hitting the gay community hard right now. So any day now, gay clubs will be declared essential businesses that must stay open.
Stacey Abrams is running for governor again in Georgia. And she is doing really well with voters by saying stuff like, Georgia is the worst state to live in.
Nancy Pelosi was turned away from Catholic mass, but that's okay since the Satanists are still letting her come to their masses.
And Kira Davis is in the house and she is running for school board.
The guys talked to rapper and songwriter Tom McDonald, and one of them has face tattoos.
All this and morons. Hey everyone. Right now there's a situation brewing in the men's basics department. Men are being held hostage by overpriced brands that simply aren't mission tested. That's why we're excited to tell you about Undertack, the only brand that's literally been battle tested by special forces. These have to be the greatest boxers ever made because they cover all the bases. High quality material that's antibacterial, anti-pilling and moisture wicking. So you stay fresh and dry all day. A quick release fly and a secret pocket in the extra wide waistband for cash or tactical necessities. Undertack is durable, ultra light, fade resistant and shrink resistant. And here's the best part, they're almost 30% less than the competition. Go to get undertack.com. That's get undertack.com right now. And you can save 20% off your order with the offer code B20. That's B E E two zero. Satisfaction guaranteed or your money back. This is a great American company that's unapologetically pro-America, pro-second amendment and pro-military. Get undertack.com. That's get undertack.com and your offer code is B20. Hey everyone. Welcome to the B Weekly. I'm Kyle Mann with my buddy Adam Yenser and our friend Kira Davis.
Hi guys. It's me, your friend, Kira.
How are you doing? It has been way too long.
Good. I thought you guys forgot about me. You know, pandemic pandemic is over and everyone's getting back to normal. And you guys were like, oh, well, if Kira doesn't have any good COVID stories, what do we want with her anymore?
Yeah.
Yep.
We only wanted you as our token COVID friend.
Yeah, I'm glad to be back. It's good to see you guys. Of course, it's good to see you, Adam. Adam's been on my podcast a couple of times and he's a podcast favorite. He really is.
You're one of our favorites. We're gonna keep trying to break the record of being on each other's podcast.
I think we should go for it. I think we should go for it. I don't know who will care, but we should. I don't know. Go for it.
Should I be like jealous?
We'll see, Kyle. We'll see.
I've never been on Kira Davis's podcast.
Maybe if you come up with a good COVID story.
Yeah.
COVID stories. It's really sad.
Yeah.
Well, we also wanted to announce that we've been working in secret on a full length documentary that will be released on our YouTube channel on Wednesday, June 1st.
What?
Lots of questions going around about the definition of men and women. And we went all over the world and researched some of these questions.
Interesting. I can't wait to hear the answers because I've been asking myself.
Been trying to figure out what a man is.
For quite a while since I had my first child. What is a woman? You know?
So it's coming out on our YouTube channel. So look out for that. We worked really hard on it. So we did have the tragic news of the shooting in Texas this week. And it's like, oh man, here we go again. There's the news cycle is immediately shifted to this stuff.
Yeah.
Super sad.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know about you, but you know, when I picked up my daughter from school, I was, you know, it's hard not to be emotional, you know, you don't want to freak the kids out. Like when you're being all clingy, like I love you so much, but definitely makes you more aware of the precious time that you have together. It's such a rough day. And you know, I know that it's probably really hard to be recording this podcast. It's a lighthearted podcast. And there might be some people out there who feel like, should you be laughing and joking when this tragedy is going on? But.
Yeah, it's always hard when you wanna, you know, have the same tone about other stories in the news. But something like that is so dark and tragic, kind of overshadows all the other news stories.
We can't not address it, but at the same time, here at the B, you guys do what you do, you know? And over at my day job at Red State, um, you know, we've been covering it a lot. And you're going to get more serious coverage over there. But at the B, you know, we reckon, you know, it's okay for us to recognize it. But at the same time, there are things that people need to, as an escape. I know that the Babylon Bee is an escape for a lot of people. Um, for me, it's Netflix.
Yeah, but not the Babylon Bee.
But not the Babylon Bee. Yeah, sorry. But I, well, well, if you guys maybe had like a Tiger King kind of thing.
Then you would be interested.
Maybe.
Well, we have that documentary coming out.
Are there tigers in it?
You'll have to.
We don't know.
You have to see.
You're not even gonna give me a hint. I'm an insider. I'm a bee insider now.
We'll tell you when the cameras are up.
All right, folks.
But we're gonna, we are gonna release our Victorian era romance. The, our Babylon Bee take on Bridgerton will be coming out soon.
No, I can't. You guys didn't hire me for that. How very dare you. I have, people call me the Shonda Rhimes of conservative media. I don't know if you've heard of that.
Who calls you that?
People.
People are saying, they're talking.
Many are saying, sources say.
Everybody is saying so. Everyone says so. It's huge. Oh man, well, we'd like to our tweet, the tweet that Joel shared about this, our culture is deeply spiritually sick. It goes deeper than guns and politics and it will get worse as long as those things are all we talk about. It's true. You look at social media, I'm like, log off. Stop talking to people on social about this.
Yeah, I didn't engage last night or when this news broke at all. I didn't engage and yeah.
People that you see the tweet and you're like, you know, they're just trying to get a ton of retweets and likes over this tragedy. And I'm just like, oh no.
And it doesn't hurt everybody. It doesn't hurt to, to just take 24 hours off, like sleep on it.
Yeah.
And then come back because emotions are high. It is no matter what side of the fence you are. It's a, it's a terrible thing. We're all Americans and we're all experiencing the tragedy together. It is really okay while parents are still getting those horrible phone calls for you to not comment. It's fine. It is absolutely fine for people to say whatever weirdness on the internet and you just simply not respond. Go to bed, get some sleep. And I think a lot of our discourse would be a lot more palatable if people just slept on it.
Yeah. It's not like the classic evergreen tweet is like, it's okay not to tweet.
Yeah, it really is.
It's always a play.
And everything doesn't need to be said all at once, you know? Like, well, we're gonna have these discussions. They're gonna go on. They are going on. But this tweet to me is like, I've just been thinking about it a lot. And we've talked about it before, but there's so much more going on here than America's access to guns. There's so much more.
So here's some of the other stories that were in the news this week. Stacey Abrams, who's now the Democratic candidate for governor in Georgia. She trashed Georgia on the campaign trail last Saturday in her speech at Democrats' Blutopia Gala in Norcross, Georgia, by saying, quote, "I am tired of hearing about how we're the best state in the country to do business when we are the worst state in the country to live." She wants to get elected in Georgia by calling it the worst state in the country to live.
You feel like usually they're good at least pandering like, this is a great state. We have some problems. I want to fix it.
Or saying, these are the things we need to fix. So this is what we need to bring. Not just, I want to be a governor of this state because it's terrible. It's just the worst.
Even here in California, our politicians don't do that. Like we all know it sucks here, but no one who's running for governor is going out there going, this state is the worst. Yeah. And we have these issues, but I believe in our great state. I believe in the people. And Stacey Abrams was like, I hate you all. You didn't vote for me last time. I should be the governor now, darn it.
And she also did this weird thing. She, so Georgia had massive voter turnout in its primary, despite the fact that Abrams has been claiming all along that Georgia's voter law, the Election Protection Act, that it's going to suppress voters. And it's the one that Joe Biden said it was a return to Jim Crow. And it's, it's insane that I watched an interview with her where she was talking about this. Cause people called her out of like saying, well, you're saying that they're suppressing the vote. And now there's a greater turnout than ever. And she, this was the analogy she made. She said, claiming that voters coming out to vote is proof that there's no voter suppression is like saying there's no sharks in the water because people are going in the water. That was, that was the analogy in her head.
What's the meme of like all the equations that are.
I will, I'm glad you, you mentioned that because I was wondering how, I hadn't seen any Dems talking about this massive turnout. And so I was wondering, um, what were they gonna say to justify it?
Still standing by.
Of course.
They were suppressing the vote, even though there was a great turnout and she, she won her prime. Well, she was uncontested, right? In her primary?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, what are you gonna say? Oh, we were wrong.
We were wrong, actually. I guess it wasn't Jimmy Eagle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it wasn't Jim Crow 2.0. My goodness. At some point, people just have to get numb to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I know I'm numb to it. And I think at some point it's just, just take the elbow. Of course they're gonna fight hard for it because the bill actually cleans up a lot of election, a lot of holes in the election process that some people might take advantage of.
So you're saying the election was stolen from Trump?
I didn't, I did not say that. I'm a candidate for school board.
All right, Kira, you can take this next story.
Okay, let me put on my glasses here.
You can put on your glasses.
I don't need glasses. I just choose to wear them, just so everybody knows. Joe Biden made a statement that if China takes Taiwan by force, that the United States would intervene militarily. The White House quickly downplayed the comments, saying they don't reflect a change in US policy. Imagine, imagine having to correct the president every single day. That's your job.
They always have to walk back everything he says.
Everything. Every single thing.
I even like how these headlines are worded like this, like Biden said this, but the White House corrected. Like, doesn't that usually mean?
He the head of the White, isn't that his platform?
Runs the White House.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
I mean, think about, I think about this all the time. Think about all, now that we've seen Biden in action and we know how he is. Think about all of the indignant remarks that Michelle and Barack Obama had to put up with behind the scenes from this guy.
Oh my gosh.
They have, they probably have so many stories. First black president, plus Biden wanted to be president. Oh, they must have a book full of stories about that guy.
According to CNN, it's the third time in recent months of the White House has walked back Biden's statements, which means it's probably been a lot more than that.
If that's what CNN is admitting to.
It's literally every day. Every time Jen Psaki's up there, she's like correcting what the president said.
Jen Psaki makes you rest in peace.
Yeah. Well, she's gone to MSNBC.
Doing the same thing, but over there. So monkeypox is a thing now and CDC officials are sounding the alarm for gay and bisexual men as monkeypox spreads in community. The WHO was quick to declare though, that it is not a gay disease.
Oh, thank God. Needed to know that.
Don't worry, it's not gay. But I don't know. I saw all of the memes going around like, oh, this is gonna be the thing that they're gonna use to shut down the elections in person. I mean, I don't think so. It doesn't seem like that to me, but whatever.
No, I, I call it shark attack media. So it's basically, um, here in California, if there's a shark sighting at the beginning of the summer, then the media spends the rest of the summer reporting on every single encounter with a shark. Or, you know, you see a shark from the air or whatever, and it starts to seem like, oh my gosh, these sharks are targeting us. Like they're, they're declaring war on human beings in California, when really it's just the regular cycle of shark encounters.
Yeah, right.
And it just seems like it's happening more because the media is reporting on it more. And that's the monkeypox thing. This is, uh, this is actually endemic in some African countries. It's really not that big of a deal. And it's, it's transmitted mostly by sexual contact. So keep it in your pants and you'll be fine.
Yeah.
It's fun that shark analogies can pretty much be applied to everything.
I've done a lot of research. I've watched a lot of Shark Week.
Nancy Pelosi has been barred from the Roman Catholic mass by San Francisco Archbishop Salvatore Cordellione, which is a perfect name for a Catholic bishop, uh, until she repents of her, her public pro-abortion stance.
All right.
Good for him.
Big W for the Roman Catholic.
It is always weird to me. I know Catholics out here, it's always been strange to me when people, and this goes pretty much any religion, when there's a big issue like that and they say, well, I'm Catholic, but I don't support this tenet of the Catholic faith. There are Christian dominations. I disagree with them, but there are ones that you can be pro-choice. Like why do these people insist on, I'm a Catholic, I just don't believe in the things that the Catholic church stands for.
They're cultural Catholics. Like a lot of my Jewish friends are like that, right? Where they, they keep the Sabbath, they keep all the holidays, but they're not religious and they don't, you know, they don't really follow the other tenants of Judaism. It's, it's cultural Catholicism and Catholics are very attached to the culture of the church.
Good for that Archbishop though, in a city like San Francisco for taking that stand.
Yeah. And the headlines for this are always so sensationalized where it'll be like, a Catholic, can you believe this? You know, they're enforcing.
Yeah, standing up for what Catholics believe.
Turns out the Pope is Catholic. Well, guys, Hillary Clinton did it. Her 20, her 2016 campaign manager says she approved a plan to plant a false Russia claim with a reporter. What?
They're just like, and this was just like a very minor story this week. Oh, by the way.
Yeah. Russian collusion where they were anticipating that Trump was gonna get indicted and he was gonna get impeached. And it was all gonna come out. That was the biggest story in the news for four years straight.
Yep.
And now, you know, it's come out multiple times in multiple investigations that it was fake. And now it's finally Hillary approved the plan herself. And it's like, oh, this is a blurb. If you scroll down far enough, there's.
Page C17 at the bottom.
Maybe if Hillary got monkeypox, it would be a bigger story.
Oh, no comment. Okay, so we're gonna, we have a Babylon Bee banger of the week.
Banger of the week.
Elon Musk replaces horn sound on all Teslas with, let's go Brandon. So Elon Musk tweeted, "In the past, I voted Democrat because they were mostly the kindness party, but they have become the party of division and hate, so I can no longer support them and will vote Republican. Now watch their dirty tricks campaign against me unfold." Popcorn emoji. This feels like it happened about five years ago, but this was.
I know.
I also like that that was the banger of the week because I've noticed whether it's our articles or our videos, it has two of our primary keywords, Elon Musk and let's go Brandon. Anytime, anytime either of those words is in something, it gets all these views and clicks. Yeah, that got both of them. But we also had a bomb of the week.
Bomb of the week.
The article is, "Oh no, Congress approves $40 billion to Ukraine, but due to inflation, it's already worth only $30 billion." It's a solid inflation joke.
Okay.
Inflation, am I right?
Do you like that joke, Kira?
I don't know. I didn't like it.
You don't like that one? Why not?
Um, I don't know. It's kind of like inflation jokes are like, yeah, it's like, it's like a banking joke.
It's like a lawyer joke.
Yeah, it's gotta be an insider. Inflation is hitting me hard and it's bothering me, but I'm not really thinking about the numbers. But Elon and Elon Musk and let's go Brandon.
You like those two words?
I like it.
Like a seal, like.
Say the line. Say the line.
Yeah, well, just, you know, I know inflation's hitting you hard, but you get to be part of an incredible transition in history.
I'm really excited about it. Really excited that I can't fill my car up anymore.
So seven weeks ago, we debuted a new feature to the podcast called Sizzler Facts.
It's been seven weeks already of Sizzler Facts? That's incredible.
So somebody sent in an old photo of their local Sizzler from 1996. And you can take a look at that on the screen. There's some interesting details there. So here's an interesting Sizzler fact. Into the early to mid 1980s, competition appeared in the chain called Ponderosa Steakhouse and Bonanza Steakhouse, which were under one parent company. They had crazy promotions such as all you can eat fried shrimp and introducing a full buffet, expanding their salad bars. But in response, Sizzler lowered the quality in other menu areas and introduced a free grilled cheese bread roll at the start of the Sizzler experience, which was intended to line the stomach, curbing appetite. But customers took notice and Sizzler's reputation began to suffer.
Wow.
I grew up with Ponderosa Steakhouse.
Did you? Where was that? Was that like a Midwest thing?
I was northeast. I was in Pennsylvania.
That's all Midwest to me.
Yeah. It's weird because Pennsylvania is like two different states. Allentown Philadelphia side is like more New York, east coast urban, and then Pittsburgh and like it's all Midwest.
I've been to Pittsburgh and I felt, I felt like I was in the Midwest.
That half of Pennsylvania feels very Midwest.
Gotcha.
But I'm also, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out Sizzler's strategy here because it's like competition opened and their strategy was to lower the quality. And then customers noticed.
Well, we see how that worked out for them.
Yeah, well, this has been Sizzler Facts.
Fascinating.
Hey Babylon Bee listeners, Kyle here. Do you want to be a flag bearer for freedom? Because right now, ADF is looking for flag bearers to help lead the fight against the Biden administration's policies in the anti-freedom attacks targeting our kids, churches, schools, women's sports and First Amendment rights. Your monthly gift to Alliance Defending Freedom will help protect parents and children, female athletes, churches, and everyday Americans trying to live out their faith as granted by the US Constitution. You can support ADF today by going to adflegal.org/BEE. That's adflegal.org/BEE. And as a thank you for your continued support to help ADF defend life, liberty and our God given rights, you will receive a three by five foot American flag. With this flag, show your support for the greatest country of all time, of all time. And your willingness to step up when our freedoms are under attack with this special gift for those who support ADF today. Claim your gift and help defend religious liberty and free speech today by going to adflegal.org/B. That's adflegal.org/BEE.
And now it is time for one of our funniest segments, getting you up to date on all the news. It's time for B Radio from Austin Robertson.
One of our top two funny segments.
Yes.
Factually inaccurate. Morally correct. This is Babylon Bee Radio. Our top story, people across the nation are showing new signs of unity as they come together in the wake of a horrible tragedy to engage in the traditional ritual of arguing and hating each other. Experts warn that if left unchecked, this united spirit may spread to other countries and bring about a hateful new world order. A new CNN poll has revealed that all Americans agree there's way too much violence and that it's definitely someone else's fault other than their own. At airtime, the nation was on the brink of a civil war, but it's been called off since everything is too expensive. A bombshell report emerged this week from the Southern Baptist Convention. The denomination famous for abstinence and definitely nothing else has been harboring a secret alcohol cabinet for decades.
The evidence, I say the evidence was conclusive. All this here, we don't drink, we don't chew, and we don't go with girls that do stuff was a total sham. Who would have thought, I say, who would have thought the SBC would be hypocritical or secretive about anything?
The lead investigator also unveiled a shocking array of alcoholic beverages that Baptists have been secretly imbibing. Despite the report's certainty, 100% of Baptists still deny these charges. The revelations that many Southern Baptists also own and utilize playing cards have reverberated across southern states with over 99% of Southern Baptists clutching their pearls while their jaws fell open with some needing smelling salts at. The very thought. Finally, the document alleges that dancing is an open secret in the Southern Baptist Convention, prompting Baptist pastors to defend their congregations from accusations of such rank immorality. Surprising no one, just under 101% of Baptists say they can't understand this report either. At airtime, the SBC also insisted their leadership has never engaged in sexual misconduct. After being denied holy communion by a Catholic in San Francisco, the Church of Satan graciously reached out to House Speaker Nancy Pelosi to remind her she's still eligible to partake of the Satanic Eucharist. It's like the normal Eucharist, but evil.
The Church of Satan welcomes all. Although Speaker Pelosi claims to be a devout Catholic, she advocates for the legal murder of babies and lives a life of self-worship that is inspiring to see. She would be great addition to our congregation. Plus we wear cool robes and drink blood and play D and D.
Satanic High Priest Peter Gilmore, who plays a level 20 chaotic evil necromancer on Sundays, is reportedly a skeptical atheist who enjoys wasting his time in a fake religion for no reason. Pelosi wound up visiting a Church of Satan in San Francisco and slaughtered a black lamb on an altar of obsidian in the midst of a dark cathedral carved out of the stone of pain. She then made a level one lawful evil draw fighter and sat down for an epic game of high adventure. Pelosi also filed articles of impeachment against Pope Francis, claiming he's drunk with power because it's, quote, "not his job to deny communion to anyone." After the specter of another pandemic was raised by shocking reports of a new monkeypox strain, Pfizer announced they coincidentally have finished their monkeypox vaccine. CEO Albert Borla.
Wow, an unusually contagious variant of an old virus with unknown origins. Well, that's, that's strange, but as luck would have it, our 10-year project to create the monkeypox vaccine coincided perfectly with the first cases showing up just in time for our Q2 earnings report. I mean, uh, just in time to, you know, save the world.
The US government has already secured a contract for 500 million monkeypox vaccine doses, which will soon be required to hold a job or buy groceries. Clinical data from Pfizer showed the vaccine greatly reduced rates of hospitalization. Although they did report participants developed an overwhelming urge to go to the zoo. In rare cases, vaccine recipients began eating bushels of bananas and flinging poo at people. But Pfizer believes these were unrelated to the vaccine. Conservative commentator Ben Shapiro, known for incessantly mocking Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and inviting her to debate him, has admitted to reporters that he now feels lost and aimless following the announcement that AOC is now engaged to her longtime boyfriend.
Listen folks, I only wanted to own her with facts and logic and then explain economics to her. Okay? We could have had something special. Okay, gang? I'm quite sure I sent her all the correct signals. I called her names. I made fun of her giant eyes. You know, all the classic schoolyard charm, but she never seemed to notice me. Now she's with that other loser and will remain dumb forever. I will never love again.
Sources close to Shapiro confirm he has taken to pacing back and forth throughout the day. All the while, wailing insults to AOC that echo back to him from the empty stone walls of his cold castle fortress. Shapiro, who's been married for almost 15 years, has at least taken some solace in the fact that his wife is a doctor. AOC and her fiance were spotted registering for wedding gifts at Tiffany and Co. in Midtown. The happy couple wandered the store with a personal stylist who helpfully critiqued every item they chose, including a custom jeweling crusted 18 karat gold tax the rich toaster that retails for $10,000.
Honey, look at, we've got to get that. It's like it was made for me.
AOC, who prides herself on being a normal person who's not at all out of touch with the reality of the average American citizen, also registered for a solid gold communism has never been tried blender, a George Foreman grill made out of fine Italian leather and a mansion. Jordan Peterson is coming under criticism on social media after he commented, sorry, not beautiful. After being shown a picture of the fattest woman of all time, your mom.
Sorry, that's not beautiful at all. I mean, just look at her. She's huge. How did you even take that photo on Google Earth? I mean, really, what if your mom sat on an iPhone, let's say? It seems to me that if she sat on an iPhone, it wouldn't take a hell of a lot of time for that iPhone to become squished into an iPad because of her excessive weight. Or say she was playing pool. She's so massive, she would have to play pool with the planets themselves. If the Soviets put her in a Gulag, she could survive forever without eating. Not good.
Several critics have called for Peterson to give your mom an apology, but she wouldn't be able to hear it anyway because she's so stupid, she put quarters in her ears to listen to 50 Cent. Now you're up to date on the only news that matters. Find more fake news you can trust at babylonbee.com. Until next time, this is Austin Robertson, the voice of the Babylon Bee. So long.
Well, that was great. Thank you, Austin. You always do such a good job. And now we're gonna do another one of our top two funny segments, weekly news with Adam Yenser.
It's time for the weekly news with Adam Yenser.
At a convention this week, Stacey Abrams, the Democratic candidate for governor of Georgia, called it, quote, "The worst state in the country to live." That's a lie, said New Jersey. And according to Star Trek, Stacey Abrams will one day become president of Earth by declaring it sucks worse than Uranus. The origins of the recent monkeypox outbreak in Europe have been traced to a gay sauna in Spain. The disease is believed to have made the jump from animals to humans through this monkey by Curious George. Scientists originally had a hard time determining whether men at the sauna were gay or just European. An Iraqi citizen living in Ohio was arrested for plotting to assassinate former President George W. Bush. He was seeking revenge for what he called "the wholly unjustified and brutal invasion of Iraq." What's that? Oh, I'm being told it was actually George W. Bush who called it that. A SpaceX flight attendant alleges that Elon Musk exposed himself during a massage, then offered to buy her a horse in exchange for sex. "Obviously I refuse," she said, then galloped off into the sunset. Ex-NFL player Brandon Langley was arrested for punching a United Airlines employee at the airport, although there's some debate over who swung first. And I'm not gonna judge. It's like the Bible says, let he who has never wanted to punch a United employee at the airport cast the first stone. Longtime statesman and foreign policy expert Henry Kissinger said that in order to end the war in Europe, Ukraine must give Russia some territory. And it can't be that ruined mutated radioactive part. Delaware's Democratic Governor John Carney vetoed a bill that would have legalized marijuana in the state, which would have been the first fun thing to do in Delaware. London Breed, the mayor of San Francisco, said she will not march in the city's pride parade this year unless police are allowed to wear their uniforms. She added, "The Indian, the cowboy and the construction worker have to wear their uniforms too."
Yes.
Several CNN employees expressed outrage that host Jake Tapper stayed in the office and taped his show after testing positive for COVID. So that's why they used that CNN positive logo for two weeks. Walmart apologized after facing backlash for a new Juneteenth flavored ice cream. They're replacing it with the new flavor gentrification, which is mostly chocolate, but has more and more vanilla each time you buy it. That's it for weekly news. To see more, check out my YouTube channel and come see me live at the Great American Comedy Festival in Nebraska, June 16th to 18th. Great job, Adam. Only two dad jokes in there. Now it is time for our interview with conservative rapper Tom McDonald.
As a Christian, you know that God is always there for you, but sometimes things in this life can get overwhelming. It's a crazy time, especially with the pandemic and all that stuff. It's important to speak to a counselor, but you definitely want to talk to one who shares your faith and values. Online counseling from Faithful Counseling is there for you. You have Christian. You have Christian counselors who share your faith, who can deal with crisis of faith issues, and just deal with normal stuff that every human deals with, like depression, stress, anxiety, relationships, all that kind of stuff. You can get help on your own time and at your own pace. You can schedule a secure video chat with a counselor. Everything you share is confidential. They have 3,000 US licensed therapists across all 50 states. It's secure, convenient, professional, and affordable. Listeners get 10% off your first month at faithfulcounseling.com/babylonb. Don't wait another minute. You can get started today. Go to faithfulcounseling.com/babylonb. You're going to fill out a questionnaire, and it'll help them assess your needs and get you matched with a counselor who shares your faith and a counselor that you'll love. That's faithfulcounseling.com/babylonb.
And now for another interview on the B-Weekly.
Well, Tom, thanks for being here. We're glad we could have you on.
Yeah, thanks for having me, man.
And so where are you at right now?
So I'm in the States. I'm in California.
You just go wherever the lockdowns are the worst?
I don't know if that's even true anymore because it's been pretty gnarly in Canada for the past little while, but.
Were you up there during any of the, like, trucker protests and all the strict lockdowns? Or have you left before that?
No, I've been out in the States for like about seven years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so did your music career, was it born in the United States?
Yeah, it took, it took off in America. Yeah.
Did you get into, so what was your story? Because I read you were a wrestler when you started out originally?
Yeah, I was a pro wrestler for like a long time.
I see it.
On the Canadian, sort of like, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. On the Canadian independent scene, just, you know, I wrestled on a lot of pay-per-views with a lot of like, sort of like, former WWF guys and, and did that whole thing for like a long time and some of the best times of my life, but accumulated injuries and, believe it or not, as far as entertainment goes, I think the most brutal politics exists in the wrestling business, which is probably not what you'd expect. But sort of like mounting dissatisfaction with the politics in wrestling and accumulated injuries sort of forced me out of that world and started making music. You know, I had been writing music for like my entire life and just was so focused on the wrestling stuff that I never like publicly released songs or did videos or anything of that nature. And yeah, I did it for like 10 years before it really started cracking off and.
Did you make any of those backyard wrestling videos where you like jump onto a table full of broken glass or something like that?
I never jumped onto the table with broken glass, but we all started out
Take a chair.
filming ourselves on our trampolines, beating our buddies up and, and you know, stuff like that. So I'm sure there's a couple tapes of that floating around somewhere.
Nice.
Tell us more about the politics in the wrestling community. Was it actual politics or just nepotism and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's just like sort of the bureaucracy of, of the locker rooms and stuff like that. Like, for, for such larger-than-life characters like on screen, wrestlers are notoriously sensitive in the locker room. So it's like, I started wrestling when I was like 14 years old. And I trained for a month before I had my first match, which was very untypical. A lot of people train for a year and don't have a match or, you know, just never quite figure it out. But I had, the way that I watched it on TV, I was sort of like studying it as I watched it and I absorbed a lot of stuff from just, you know, watching it on my TV. So by the time I got in the ring, I had sort of like the physics of the whole thing like figured out, and I had a really good idea of sort of the psychology behind telling stories in a ring and stuff like that. So I was a quick study and I got started really quick and I was young and there's all these guys, you know, 35, 40 years old that are sort of like blowing smoke up my ass, telling me like, "You're the greatest thing since sliced bread. You're going to be WWF champion one day, dah 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 dah." And when you're like 14 years old and there's all these guys that you look up to telling you that you're God's gift, you know, you get a little bit of a, you start to get a little bit of an ego. And, you know, there's guys, there's guys coming to me that have wrestled for five, six, seven years and, and they're coming up to me in the locker room saying like, "Hey, like, in our match tonight, I was thinking that we could do this and this and this." And I was saying, "Well, no, I don't like that. That doesn't make sense. Instead of that, we're going to do that and that and that." So I got like kind of a reputation for being difficult to work with, not because, and I don't think that that's legitimate. I just think that like my understanding of the wrestling business was, for whatever reason, a little bit beyond some of the guys who had been wrestling for longer than me. And they didn't, they didn't take well to that.
Yeah, and you were young and you were telling them what you thought and they didn't like that part, probably.
Exactly. Yeah, so guys were just making it difficult for me and it's very clicky. Like if you wrestle for one promotion on the indie circuits, like a lot of the guys, they don't let you wrestle for anybody else. And when you start becoming friends with other guys from other promotions and working in other places, resentment builds and it's just a very messy, ego-driven, sensitive locker room culture. It's really weird.
So you're totally prepared for the music industry?
Yeah.
Boom, right? The best, the best training you could ever hope for.
Seriously?
If you could wrestle any one politician, who would it be?
I'd probably work DeSantis because I think he's a badass and he'd make a hell of a wrestling.
Yeah, you guys would, you guys would be in the same class, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, maybe.
Now, we usually have on people like Michael Schellenberger and Eric Metaxas, and I believe you're the first person with face tattoos we've had on. When did you start, when did you start getting the tattoos and what's the significance of some of them?
Thank you for bringing an end to the face tattoo discrimination on the Babylon Bee.
I think Eric Metaxas might get one eventually. We'll see.
Cool. Well, I'm glad to be the crossbearer for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I got my first one, I got these on my eyelids then when I was like, I don't know, 17 or 18 years old. And part of it was really, I was hanging out with just a lot of, you know, I was pro wrestling at the time. There's a lot of unsavory types that end up sort of in the wrestling business and a lot of those guys are, you know, big dudes, riding motorcycles, lots of tattoos, and I wanted tattoos. And at the same time, I was working construction and going to high school and loathed building houses, loathed it, hated it. It's strange, but I kind of wanted to do something that would prevent me from ever getting like a real job.
Oh, and that's the way to do it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I was like, "I'm going to be a pro wrestler or I'm going to do something sort of outside the nine-to-five place and like, how can I lock myself into that path? I'm going to get these tattoos on my eyelids and now I have no choice. I have to make something of myself."
Nice. So that's, that's a good message, I think, to any kids that are watching. If you want to be a wrestler or a rapper, get face tattoos so it limits any other career options.
Yeah, so you're unemployable.
Just, it puts you on that path.
Start early.
Be unemployable, yeah. But it's great that you've been able to pivot and utilize that success that you probably built as a public figure in wrestling and took that with you to rapping.
A lot of similarities between the businesses, that's for sure.
And now, your YouTube videos have gotten like multi-million views. They blow up almost every time you release a song. Some of your big ones, Fake, Woke, Snowflakes, Brainwash. When you got into music, did you intend for it to have a political message or a social message? Or is that something that you kind of evolved into later and felt it was like necessary to speak out about?
I had made like some political songs like early in my career. It was never sort of my music's primary function, but it was definitely always something that was sort of peripherally existing in my music and I had done a couple of them. I'd always talked about politics and social issues and stuff like that with like my friends and family, always been super interested in it. And then essentially what happened was I was making the same music as everybody else. You know, I was young, like I started when I was 18. So I was making the same music as everybody else essentially. And then about like four and a half, maybe five years ago, I was just drinking really heavy and just like living the life and just treating myself really poorly, which sort of culminated in a pretty like acute sort of mental breakdown, mental unraveling. And I spent like nine months sort of rehabilitating myself from that, like really acute depression, really acute anxiety, just like very unwell. And that was just like a lot of stress and alcohol abuse and a bunch of stuff had caught up with me. So this, this nine-month period that I spent, sort of I had to like move back in with my ma and I was like living on her couch and, and going to doctors and trying to get, see a therapist and I quit drinking and quit partying and quit everything, quit fast food, caffeine, everything, like just completely cleaned myself up. And as I was sort of like putting the pieces of my personal life back together, I hadn't made music for like nine months. And I was sort of thinking like, what's important to me? Like what do I want to talk about? How do I want to talk about it? Who do I want to talk to? You know, and I was just figuring out like who I was like all over again. And that's when it was sort of like, I only want to make music that means something to me. And I started sort of slowly drifting away from the types of music I'd been making my whole life and started stepping into new territory. And that's, that's when things really started clicking.
And you rap a lot about American politics. Did you ever rap about Canadian things like beavers or poutine?
No, there's only so many songs you can write about beavers and poutine. So, no, you know what, man? Like Canadian politics, like at that point in time, it's definitely, it's definitely gone more, a lot more exciting in recent like years. But, but back then, like it was like largely uneventful. Like back then, Canadians paid more attention to American politics than we paid to our own. I think that's the same with like a lot of the world, so.
What has your experience been like in the music industry? Have you had encounters with mainstream music industry? Do you feel like they are apprehensive to it? Do you feel like you have to deal with like censorship issues or anything like that?
I think like the whole entertainment industry, like sort of overall is, tries to avoid anything that's, any unpopular opinions, anything that's not mainstream, anything that's not super safe. I think they try to avoid that stuff like the plague. So I've been lucky enough to, I've sort of created my own ecosystem outside of the music industry, completely independent from the music business. So, you know, I don't have to deal with a lot of those things that I see other artists dealing with.
With stuff promoting your own work on YouTube and social media, have you faced any sort of tech censorship or anything from those platforms that you feel like has affected you or have you flourished there pretty easily?
I mean, I've, I've seen people deal with worse. I've seen people have videos and music and removed and profiles evaporated overnight and, and you know, Twitter's shut down and, but for me, up until this point, it's been sort of really like moderate, the things that they've done. But they've definitely done some things. Like I, like my profiles get hit with strikes and stuff from posts that I made seven years ago that like apparently now are violating some sort of community standard that's just recently been implemented.
Right. They're like going back. They're going back. Do you think you made it through this like purge as a lot of people in this space look all, do you think you've made it through these purges because of the, the amount of traffic that you're driving to the platforms that you're on?
I mean, it's definitely got to be a factor, right? They got, they got to be looking at it and thinking like, well, yeah, this guy's generating this much traffic and this much revenue for us, so I guess just let him be. But, you know, they do weird things like I did a video a couple months back called New World Order.
Yeah.
And, and like it was the weirdest thing where like, the video was exploding and you'd like go to the video and it's two, three million views or whatever. And it got like fact-checked with like a Wikipedia blurb.
That is so funny.
Yeah, and it said that like New World Order is
It's a conspiracy theory.
Yeah, about a total, it's secretly emerging totalitarian government and blah, blah, blah.
It's so ridiculous.
And so that, that was like the first thing. And I noticed that like as soon as that fact-check blurb went up, like views
The reach went down.
Plato, like almost immediately, like it was taken out of feeds and notifications were turned off and dah 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 dah. And then like the weirdest thing was, when you went to the, when you went to the actual video, it said that it was trending at number six or number seven.
Wow.
So then, but when you go to the trending charts, the charts went from one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10. They completely removed us off the, like it was just gone. You know, it's been like a lot of, a lot of stuff like that over the last four years. And honestly, like most of it's been very like forgettable because it's just like, it's very difficult to, I mean, you guys know, you guys are social media savvy, you have profiles, you're on the platforms, you know what's up. It's very difficult when we see things on the back end or we see things with our social media that's irregular.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to explain what we're experiencing to an audience that doesn't really have experience in the space.
Right.
And I feel like it's often hard to prove what's happening. It's like you know the numbers are less than they should be or you know something seems like it's not being promoted.
They say shadow banning is a myth and it's like, that is not a myth and you can't, and I wonder if like as performers, as artists, as people, you know, as creators, do we even want to involve the audience with that kind of drama or do we want to just let them enjoy our art? But meanwhile, you hear like people in press conferences talking about the new world order now, like still casually, it's like somebody needs to update that Wikipedia page.
I experimented with that like maybe a week or two ago. Biden did this thing, he did a press conference or a summit or something and he had mentioned the new world order, like with the exact term. And I was just like, oh man, that's so crazy. That's like, you know, the fourth or fifth time I've heard a president say that. So I cut together this video and it started with me and the new world order video and I said, "Look, this is a video that I released called New World Order. This is the fact-check that they placed on the video saying that it's conspiracy, dah 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 dah." I followed that with a short compilation of like four or five different prominent politicians, all using the term new world order, and then ended the video back to me saying, "So what do you guys think? Like is this new world order a conspiracy or is it real? You let me know." So I didn't present it as
It's real.
factual information. I didn't, I asked, I presented
A discussion.
non-biased stuff, yeah. And, and I asked a question about it and that got fact-checked. And Facebook let me know that like people that repeatedly post misinformation have their reach throttled and bizarre, right?
Wow, that's really, you know, I really liked that you approached it that way. Ask the right questions and let people discuss it and, and come to the conclusions on their own. But it doesn't work for all of us little people, does it? Well, you're not little, but yeah, you tried it that way and they still, they still tried to get you.
Yeah, it was, it was bizarre.
I feel like we need to get Elon Musk to buy 9.2% of every one of these companies.
Yeah, Facebook, Instagram.
Put some pressure on him a little bit.
I would tend to agree with that, but I'd also, I'd be a little skeptical if Elon Musk held such a high stake in everything in the world, we might all end up with the Neuralink.
It's so funny that you say that because I
You can't, you can't, you can't eat at this restaurant unless you got your Neuralink card. I'm sorry.
Now, now we have the quote we're going to put on this video to get some clicks.
That was a juicy one for you.
Exactly. What are some of the issues out there right now? You know, there's, there's obviously some themes in a lot of your music. What do you feel are the most important issues and problems to kind of address through your platform and your art right now?
There's just like so much stuff going on, dude. Like it's such a busy time for social issues and I, I've addressed a sort of a plethora of different things in, in my songs and it's like we just said, like I think the whole point of my music is to sort of talk about the things that most people only talk about in the privacy of their homes with people that they're close to. But that doesn't inspire any real discussion or change or anything when, when it's, those conversations are kept tucked away, you know, behind closed doors. So my whole sort of prerogative has been say things in a shocking way, as loud as you can, on a public stage, and hopefully like inspire those discussions and conversations. And I think there's, I think there's a lot of value in, in doing things that way.
Absolutely, obviously. You've had a real impact. I have a question. Absolutely. Obviously. You've had a real impact. Uh, I have a question. What is your red pill story? Like, were you raised kind of conservative or did you come to these conclusions on your own? Like tell us about your, your, uh, your relationship with conservative values?
You know, I wasn't really, really raised any type of way. Like my parents never said that like, we're liberal or we're conservative or we're religious or we're atheist or we're this or we're that. They just kind of let me just wade through life and figure out, sort of what I was interested in and what I liked. And I'd take those things to them and talk to them about it. I think that a lot of the conservative values, I think a, a lot of them are just sort of regular life, common sense stuff. Like I didn't need to be taught these things. It just seemed like that's what was in my heart for, for a long time. So, and, and you know, it's, not to even really dog on the liberals that much either, because I think that they have a lot of really good ideas, um, about their view on the world. So, uh, you know, I, I try to not subscribe to any particular set of political ideologies. I think that's the biggest part about everything is instead of trying to find some type of a, uh, concrete, absolute alignment for myself, I try to just look at different perspectives and understand them and appreciate them for what they are. And that, and that's really, and that's really it. Apply them in my life as necessary, you know?
When you get, we're getting started. Who were the rappers and artists that influenced you?
I think I was about like 12 years old. I'll give you the Reader's Digest. I went into a pawn shop with my dad and he gave me five bucks. And he said, you can buy anything in this pawn shop with this $5. I found a plastic milk crate full of CDs. And, uh, one of the CDs in this bin was Tupac All Eyes on Me, which was a double CD set. I had no idea who Tupac was. Uh, but all the other CDs were, it was a single CD for $5. This one Tupac CD was two CDs for $5. So I was like.
Two for one special.
Yeah. I was looking, I was looking at it economically. So I, I, I bought that one.
But I've read that your music is racist. How could you like Tupac?
It's a mystery. It's a mystery. I know. Uh, so I started off with Tupac. I listened to that for probably like a couple of years straight. And I'm like the, the, the type of guy where, um, I don't have like 50 artists that I listen to on rotation. I find like one thing that really resonates with me and I, and I ride for that. That's like my guy. So Tupac was my guy for like a long time. And then, um, I was heading home from school. One day I got on this yellow school bus. And this kid comes, sits down next to me and he said, uh, he had a Discman with him and some headphones. And he's like, you gotta listen to this. Uh, and I was like, what is it? And he's like, it's Eminem. And I was like, oh, that, that doesn't sound very cool. What is that? And he's, and he's like, oh, he's a white rapper. And I was like, pardon me. He, he was like, he's a white rapper. So I, I put, I put on the headphones and listened to M and for years and years and years, it was like Tupac and Eminem. That was my jam. I got into Lil Wayne and Drake and, and stuff like that for a few years. And, and now I'm kind of like, you know, before I was a pro wrestler, I had like a favorite wrestler that I like loved. And then I got into pro wrestling and then you kind of stopped looking at it like that. You stop like buying into the marketing and marking out for the stories and stuff. And you sort of become like one of the workers instead of one of the fans. And I think that's sort of what's happened with the music stuff. I just have, it becomes so disenchanted with the music industry and, and, and I, I have a really good understanding of like how these guys are marketed to me and like, what is authentic and what is just a, a, a perfectly packaged, um, um, manufactured thing from a record label, you know? So, so, so now these days I just kind of like keep my head down and just work on my music. And I don't listen to a whole lot of music, period. Cause I just work on it so much that when I have free time, the last thing I want to do is listen to music these days.
Well, great job on that interview, Adam. Uh, I did not get to talk to the conservative rapper sadly. Um, but you can hear the rest of that interview in the subscriber lounge later on. But for now, we're going to talk to Kira Davis. She's in the house and she's running for school board.
Yes, I am.
What is your position on grooming our children?
I don't like it. I'm against it.
What? Controversial.
Coming out and saying this now, I'm gonna stake this moral ground. I am against grooming children.
So a lot of people are like leaving California, not fighting, but you know, people gotta do what's right for them. Why did you decide to stay and fight? And why school board?
Well, this is our home. This is where we live right now. So leaving is not an option, but I think like a lot of other parents, you know, I'm a political pundit, so I have my head in politics all day. I've been writing about the parent-led movement, starting with Loudoun County parents. I know what's been going on, but I wasn't really paying attention to what was going on in my own backyard. Because I live in what we think of as a very conservative area of California. It's actually kind of the last bastion of conservatism in California, Orange County. And I thought, you know, my neighbors are good people. They got this. And I focused on national events, but when I looked up during COVID, I was like, whoa, I didn't realize my board is filled with liberals. I didn't realize that they were approving all of this controversial content. I knew what some of the state laws said, but I didn't know that the school board was speeding some stuff along. I didn't understand that there were parents trying to sound the alarm. Cause I, and I was looking away, looking at other areas. And so, um, my representative voted, uh, a sense of plea to, um, extend the mask mandate on our kids a couple of months ago by extra few days. And then she resigned because she knew she was going to get a recall. And so she didn't even show up at that meeting. She just like zoomed in. It was like, yo, voting to keep your kids masked and like peace out. So that day, I think that was the day where I had said, outside of being a political pundit, outside of my work as a conservative commentator, just as a mom, I was like, I have had enough. And if this seat is open, I need to make sure that someone gets on that board that thinks like me. And the only person I can be sure that thinks like me is me. So I'm running and, uh, yeah. And I threw my hat in the ring. Literally like immediately, the second she resigned, I was like, I'm running, we're doing this. And I, I just want to be part of this parent revolution. So.
Nice. What school district is this?
This is Capital, uh, Capital Unified in South Orange County. It's, I think the second largest school district in the state, actually. It's a heavily contested school board. I didn't realize this till I got in, but there are a lot of state parties interested in owning that seat. So I'm, I'm up against a lot of pushback.
Now, as part of your campaign, are you willing to say California is the worst state in the country to live?
Look, California has its problems. We have our problems, but we have so many good people here who are solution oriented. And plus you guys, the weather.
The weather is.
What are some of the specific, uh, changes that you want to see in the school board?
Well, this, this school board election is pretty cut and dry. I'm not even missing words. There are three things the parents are concerned about, and there are three things that I'm most concerned about as a parent. One CRT. We don't want it in our schools. It's, it's been slowly, uh, inching its way into our curriculum. And now it just seems like we're up against a tidal wave. And the state is not going to help us. So parents don't want that. I don't want that. I do not want vaccine mandates or mask mandates. I'm very much against that. I think those are for parents to decide. If you want to put a mask on your kid when, when he or she goes to school, I think that's fine. You should be able to do that. But again, that's your choice. If you want your child to be vaccinated, I think that's fine. You should be able to do that, but it's your choice. You're the parent. You know what's best for your kid. So you shouldn't be forcing anyone else to do something that they feel uncomfortable with, uncomfortable with in order to avail themselves of their right to a public education. It just, it doesn't make any sense to me constitutionally or even morally. So I want to make sure that when cold and flu season hits again next year, that there's somebody sitting on the board is going to vote against.
And monkeypox.
And monkeypox, I want to make sure.
Monkeypox, pro monkeypox or anti?
I'm anti monkeypox. I'm against monkeypox. And I was one of the first school board candidates to come out against monkeypox.
The only anti monkeypox candidate.
The other thing we want to avoid is school closures. No more closures. That turned out to be a disaster. And there are, there is a certain element in our government that wants to do it again, because we can use that as leverage against parents and taxpayers to get what the government wants on other side. So those are my three main issues. Of course, there's a lot more that goes on, on school board. But this particular election cycle, that is what every parent I talk to is the most worried about.
Pro drag queen story hour or anti?
Anti drag queen story hour. Come on.
It's amazing when, uh, when the pandemic hit, it really became clear how important local politics is.
Yes.
Because before that, it's like you go on, I'm going to vote for the important stuff like president and congressperson. And then it's like the other stuff. I don't know. That guy has a cool name. I'll fill in the bubble, you know, but you, you didn't realize like how important it was. And I think the people that, the people, not, not you, but the people who tend to run for school board tend to be terrible people just because, I don't know. They seem like the people to me that would have like.
They're people who like meetings.
Yeah. Like hall monitor types in high school. Like those are the types of people who are like, I'm going to go on the local politics.
Well, that, well, I think what you're responding to is.
Make what I said sound smart. Go ahead.
Let me work my magic here, Kyle. Um, I think what you're really saying now, well, there's, this is a, to me, this is a difference between, um, people who love government and people who tolerate government.
Right, right.
So for people like us who just tolerate government as something that we have to live with, we give them our taxes and they give us a few things in return. We, we don't want to be in government. We don't want to go to meetings. We don't want to sit for hours and tell, and hear someone else tell us what they want us to do. Or someone else talk about their pet projects. We don't have time for that. We're busy. We're building careers. We're building families. We're going to work, keeping our head down, you know, and, and going to work, coming home to family and doing it all over again the next day. That we're living the American dream or trying to. That's what normal, regular people do. But people who love government want to be in government, right? They love meetings. They love sitting and hearing each other talk. They love the sound of their own voices. And typically those people aren't great leaders. And so that's why you, you see this disparity. The people who have the time to run and want to run, and these are generalizations, obviously, are typically the people who aren't great leaders and aren't necessarily interested in the day to day of the American dream. But they love the idea of being someone, of having some control. So common sense people aren't interested in that. And that's why you don't have a lot of those people in politics. So there's some, there, there are some places, but mostly it's just people who love conference calls. You know, you don't want them running your city council.
That sounded much smarter than the way you said it. We should hire her the way that, that Joe Biden has the White House to clarify his statements. We should have Kira.
Kyle said this.
Kyle said this. The Babylon Bee's position is.
Clarify.
Here's a smarter version of it.
Yeah. JR Tolkien had a quote about how like mankind isn't fit to rule. And he says like, only one in a hundred people is like fit to even like consider it. He's like, but the problem is the people who run for it are the, the least qualified. Cause they're the ones who are like, I want to have power. You're like, wait a minute.
And that is the conundrum we're in, right? Because I have, I don't have time to run for school board. I have a million things going on in my life. And, um, frankly, the, the, like the insider political intrigue that is going on with this school board race too, is, is more than I would care to deal with as a thinking, feeling human being. It's all, it's so crazy to me. Who has time for it? But the thing is, is if good people don't step up and make the time, we're just doomed to keep repeating the same cycle. And that's probably the silver lining of COVID, that we got to see what happens when we trust people who are poor leaders. And self-interested, when we trust them with the daily mechanics of our, our lives. Joe Biden didn't shut down your school. You know, Joe Biden can't shut down your doctor's office or, uh, your favorite restaurant. That was all local. Sizzler never closes during COVID. This just expands the salad bar.
They've got the sneeze guard. They're perfectly safe from COVID.
They were ahead of the game with that one. That was before COVID. Well, how can people check out more about your campaign or support you?
Please go to kiraforschoolboard.org. I brought you guys some flyers today.
Oh, alright.
You can't vote for me, but you can share that information or you can just stare at my headshot and think about all of the great times we have together while I'm on your show. But, uh, whatever you want to do with it, that's fine. If you don't live in my area, you can just share my information. That helps a lot, but yeah.
Awesome. This has been Kira Splaining with Kira Davis. We are going on to love mail, which is a nice break from hate mail. Hey Babylon Bee listeners, Kyle here. Do you want to be a flag bearer for freedom? Because right now ADF is looking for flag bearers to help lead the fight against the Biden administration's policies in the anti-freedom attacks targeting our kids, churches, schools, women's sports and First Amendment rights. Your monthly gift to Alliance Defending Freedom will help protect parents and children, female athletes, churches, and everyday Americans trying to live out their faith as granted by the US Constitution. You can support ADF today by going to adflegal.org/bee. That's adflegal.org/bee. And as a thank you for your continued support to help ADF defend life, liberty and our God given rights, you will receive a three by five foot American flag. With this flag, show your support for the greatest country of all time, of all time, and your willingness to step up when our freedoms are under attack with this special gift for those who support ADF today. Claim your gift and help defend religious liberty and free speech today by going to adflegal.org/bee. That's adflegal.org/bee. Kira, it's your job now to read this love mail from Kev.
A nice, long love letter.
He sent us something on, uh, looks like Facebook or Instagram or something.
Okay. Kev says, thank you so much for what you and the B team do. You're, you're welcome. I don't know if that's for me, but you're welcome, Kev.
Your honor.
Few realize that we dwell in Babylon. I love America. The degree it reflects the kingdom of God is the degree to which she is noble. Your satire honors God. Prophet, I don't know about that last part.
My monkey gaze on a joke. Completely.
Jesus is up there like, yes. You nailed it, Adam. Your satire honors God, prophetic function in speaking the truth. Your satire honors the king. In America, that equals the constitution and the people. I served America 23 years in uniform. I have supported some of the best. Your team is great at what you do and adds a crap ton of value to the public discourse. Blessings on your family, your team and your haters.
Wonderful.
I like how it was all about, you know, conservative values and God, and then he worked in the words.
Yeah, I, I.
Ton of value.
I cleaned that up. It wasn't crap time. It was.
Almost got through it.
And he didn't say crap. So that was a long enough break from, uh, hate mail. So here's some real hate mail. This is a long thread from a guy named Xander.
He's very concerned. He has a lot of concerns.
Honestly, you were a big reason why I'm not sure I'm a Christian anymore. I just want whoever runs this to know that. You and the Christians I know who laugh as you mock and throw stones at the exact hurting broke people that Jesus would have sat at a table with. I guess it's been clarifying though, to know that the pastors I used to trust and respect have so abandoned the gospel and instead worship right wing politics. Are you proud of this page? Do you think Jesus would scroll through your own the libs memes and laugh? If you don't drink water, Kira. If you are even Christian anymore, your gospel is worthless. Uh, and it's true, is division and hurt. And I want no, uh, part of, in it. But anyway, thank you for helping reveal that to me. Part of me still believes in a just God and that part of me is thankful that there will be justice for all the harm you have done. Wow. That was heavy.
God will only deliver part justice.
I feel like Jesus would probably, if he was scrolling through, and I can't speak for Jesus, just hypothetically, if I had to guess, I think he'd laugh at some. And then some he'd probably think with this guy. It's a mixed, it's a mixed bag.
Yeah. Some are going to hit, some aren't going to hit. But, uh, I always think people like this, I'm like, your faith was.
Yeah.
It's weird to say, I'm not sure I'm a Christian.
Because of you.
I, I saw a joke I didn't like and, and I lost all of my, my deeply held beliefs.
I've been lied about people who are like, yeah, I had a bad pastor or a bad church experience. So now I'm not a Christian. I'm like, were you ever a Christian?
Yeah. I mean, I can understand there's a lot of deep hurt from different things that churches do.
You know what? I don't. No, I don't buy it. I don't buy it. I don't think you were. No, I don't buy it. I, if you love Jesus and you get Jesus, then you get Jesus and then you get that people are broken and hurt you. So you're either with Jesus or you're not with Jesus. You can make all the excuses you want.
I'm not making excuses. Are you talking to me or him?
I'm talking to the people out there.
She's talking to the people.
Oh, awesome.
Awesome. Uh, thank you guys for tuning in. And if you're a subscriber, tune in for the subscriber portion of the B weekly where we'll do, uh, some, uh, notes from our Instagram followers, a bonus hate mail. And have you done the 12, 10 questions before? I'm guessing you have.
I have.
But we have, we have some questions from subscribers for her though.
We'll do subscriber questions.
And we got the rest of the Tom McDonald, uh, uh, rest of Tom McDonald interview as well.
Yes.
Coming up next for Babylon Bee subscribers.
And this guy comments and he says, once again, the Babylon Bee implies that being an introvert is a problem that needs to be repaired or fixed. Even satire has its limits. Disappointing.
Even satire has its limits. You can joke about anything. Just don't make a lighthearted joke about introvert.
Nobody likes small talk.
No, some people like small talk. Extroverts. They love small talk.
This has been another edition of the B Weekly from the dedicated team of certified fake news journalists you can trust here at the Babylon Bee. Reminding you that someone out there knows something about Carmen and we're going to find them.